January 25th, the record reflect that Council President Vasquez is here. Councilor David Abdo and Council Brian DePena are present. I'm the Chair Mark LaPlante. Let us start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as for all.
Counselor DePena, if you really, if you want to change your nameplate so people know who you are, you're welcome to do so.
Can you, you got it, sir.
All right, let's start off. Mr. Rynello, welcome, sir. We'll start off with you right at, well, let's do this. The clerk is here and Department, Mr. Vargas is here. Which one comes first on our agenda? Which one? Where are you?
My number or my free cash?
By new, which one?
City Attorney.
City Attorney?
That's first.
City clerk, you mean? All right, let's go first then. Twenty-eight sixteen appropriation transfer.
Counsel, this is a transfer request from free cash to be used for litigation services by the, for the city attorney's office. I believe the city attorney does plan on coming, coming in and, or coming downstairs, he's upstairs, to explain, not in specific detail, but in general what this line item's for. But it's for outside legal services related to existing cases and upcoming, particular upcoming collective bargaining and a few other things that we are.
Is there a motion to table till the city attorney comes downstairs?
Motion to table.
Motion made. There's a second.
Here he is.
Up. We'll withdraw the motion. City Attorney is here. You're up, Ms. City Attorney.
I just explained without any detail.
Well, I don't have much detail either because I don't have. We're looking for a supplemental appropriation. The money would go essentially for outside council fees. We've already, we have some outside counsel that we have already approved with money for the Gilmet and the high school litigation. However, in addition to that, we now have outside council fees and expert witness fees that are mounting on a case that is starting trial tomorrow. And that's a case that we're all familiar with regarding a lease of office space for the school department. So...
I wouldn't be so sure, but to interject, we have two new members on this committee and at a courtesy to them, they may not be fully aware of all the details regarding that. It's up to them. They may want to get a brief, I know this is complex, but a very general summary just to bring them up to speed if you feel it's worth your while, councilors. If not, we can just continue moving on. It's up to you. No, yes, no?
I'm vaguely familiar with the DiAdamo situation.
Is that the only situation you're talking about here?
That's the one I'm talk, well, a large amount of this money, a good percentage of this money would go to pay expert witness fees. We have several experts in building functions, roofing, elevators, heating and air conditioning, electrical and so forth, as well as real estate experts as to values that we're utilizing for the trial. The trial is expected to take at least three weeks and as much as seventeen weeks. We also have co-counsel, outside counsel, who is someone very well-versed in the area of construction law because some of these issues trespass, these lease issues trespassed into the area of building construction. So we have a co-counsel who's going to be with us throughout the course of the trial. That is going to amount to a hundred to $200,000 in expert witness fees as well as council fees. In addition to that, we have a, a large amount of labor cases which we have referred out, some of which have been referred out to counsel at the request of the overseer. Others have been farmed out because of conflicts and others will be farmed out because of preference. The mayor has asked that they be filed, file, excuse me, that they be sent out to outside counsel and we're in agreement with that as a strategy. So all, almost all of this money, none of this money that we're anticipating here is going to be used for settlements or anything like that. It's all going to be going for expert witnesses, outside counsel, stenographic expenses, things of that nature. And we do, we have met, just so you're aware, although the number seems large, we have met with our outside counsel. We've reviewed the number of cases and we feel that this is an amount that will carry us through the balance of the year. I also want to point out as perhaps a point of information for the new councilors that when we appeared before this council for approval of the budget back in June of last year, we were all well aware that the amount that we were budgeting wouldn't carry us through the year. We anticipated that we'd be coming back once free cash had been determined. So while it may be somewhat of a surprise and there may be some sticker shock with respect to the number, the reality is that this is compliant with, or in accord with what we said we were going to do. So it shouldn't come as, as a great surprise.
So to recap, the, the, to recap, the city, the school department issue, which you also mentioned, some, you mentioned collective bargaining and some union issues, part of this as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Lot of labor cases. We're going to be sending out the bulk of our labor. Some of the labor stuff that's just not worth spending outside council fees on will handle in-house, but...
Just so I'm clear, there's litigation to deal with that. We're not talking about negotiations. We're talking about, talking about claims. We're talking about grievances that have been filed against the city, correct?
Yes. I do want to say that outside counsel is also handling contract negotiations. So to a certain extent, outside counsel's bills come in and they're a mixture of both, but we have allocated what we expected to spend on negotiations, contract negotiations within our budget. So this supplements it. In other words, yes, although the bills will be mixed, the reality is that the amount for negotiation is separate and apart from the amounts here that we're asking, which would be for claims, grievances, unfair labor practice claims before the division or, excuse me, Department of Labor Relations, civil commission appeals and things like that. We've had a number of bypasses. We've had a number of bypass appeals. We have fought those and we've fought them successfully. But there's been a lot of civil service activity and a lot of union activity, grievances and so forth, and this will assist us.
Back to the school department, one, do we anticipate that this is going to be the last time there is going to be a request for transfers of monies? Or is this one of those things where you're going for it now, but that we reserve the right to come back again later for more additional funds?
Well, I don't think we'll need additional funds for this. I don't know to what extent we may end up with a judgment against us. If there's a judgment against us, one of the options would be to supplement our budget with an additional appropriation. Another option would be to allow it to go on the recap. And also if there's a, a case that we may decide we want to settle, that would be separate from this. But right now, we don't see anything that we're anticipating we'll be settling between now and June and something in the next five months.
So the 50,000 square foot question, as we look down on this, on this topic, how much money are we looking or have, are we expecting to be spending on the school department lawsuit? Not judgment wise, just for, just for litigation and the processes involved in it?
I, I would think that in addition to amounts that we've already spent on experts and deposition and so forth, it would be something over $100,000 and under $200,000.
So three, $100,000, $200,000.
Can I be more specific? I can't. I know we just had an outside attorney bill of $40,000. We're going into trial mode, half-day trials, and as I said moments ago, the trial is expected to last at least three weeks and as much as seventeen. So if we have people trying the case, we've had counsel working on this all weekend and late at night and so forth, those, those numbers will be high to try this case, a major case.
So you're asking for $470,000 and I just asked you the question about how much money do you think it's going to take? Is it between, in total, between $100,000 and $200,000?
On the school litigation, yes.
Right. Are you telling me that the balance of that money is going to be spent on the union stuff? Which, okay, so frankly, the, the, the union stuff is a much bigger slice of the pie than the school department stuff?
Yes. We, we have talked to outside counsel. They have, we have quite a large volume of cases and we asked them based upon not only what they've been billing and so far, but also the volume, what they would predict would be the expenses to carry us through the remainder of the year. And those numbers, I, and I don't recall unfortunately how, how exactly we split them up, but those numbers combined with what we anticipate for the school department, we expect will be in that neighborhood, 470,000.
Do you have for this committee or for the full council a listing of the various, where their grievances that this money's going to be paying for?
No, we don't. There are, there are lists of cases, but the reality is how much will go for each case, it depends. It's not something that you can easily predict. It depends upon the administrative procedure, how the case goes through the system. You know, in some cases where we're, as I said, we've, we've fought some bypass appeals. We just got a positive result, a finding in our favor last Friday. But some cases get knocked out at the investigatory stage, which means that you don't spend much time nor much money on them. Others go for a full hearing and sometimes even after that result in a court appeal.
I would fully expect the question to me, if not from the members here, but from our other colleagues at the full council level, what kind of cases there are. I think it would be good for us, and I'm not sure how much of this you can divulge, but as much as you can, I'd be very interested in knowing, what are we looking at as a city with respect to the kind of litigation slash grievances we're facing here in total? Kind of an umbrella, kind of an overview kind of thing, just a big picture. So I have a fundamental understanding of what we're facing here, what's your office, quite frankly, and the outside counsel is facing? Because I do know that you're extremely busy and I do know we've got a lot of stuff going on and it'd be helpful for me to understand the depth of that involvement.
We're working on a list of cases and a status report that we're going to provide to the mayor. I would be happy to provide that to the council. It's something that's in progress. Our hope is that we will be able to produce that by Thursday. But I, I temper that a little bit because all day today in the office, we've been focusing on the upcoming case. So my, my staff is really going to put that together. We're happy to provide that to you.
What I would like, what my request to you is, we'll be go with this and I'm going to yield the floor to anybody else who has a question, my last point, is if you, if, see if you're able, the goal of the target should be to try to have that in time for the next full city council meeting. Do you have, for various open meeting laws, public meeting laws, et cetera, information? Is this information you can make public that can be part of our packet?
I would, I'm sorry.
That's my question.
I would prefer this not be made public. There's a, there's a, there are, there is a strategic reason why the, the numbers grouped together.
Yep.
I, I don't think it's that we want to necessarily divide this number up by case and say which case we think we'll spend more money on, et cetera, et cetera. I think that broadcast strategy, and it's not something that's conducive to getting the best results we can. I think internally, certainly we can talk about that. You're entitled to know that, that information as, as the mayor is, and I have no problem discussing that with you. I just don't think that this is something that should be for public consumption and I would, I would hold that in respect.
So my request would be not that you attach a dollar amount per case, but rather...
I understand.
The listing of that and then we'll, if we have questions, we can always ask you out of that, where's, where's, where's the pie sliced?
Yep.
That's it. That's it for me. Any other questions from anybody else? Okay, no other further questions? Is there a motion?
Can I just have one?
Oh, sure.
We do need a public hearing for this and...
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to order, to send this to the full council and order a public hearing.
Motion's been made and it has been seconded. If there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Guys have it. Thank you, counselor.
Thank you, councilors.
Next on our agenda is document 2116 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant. I'm going to presume that's brought together by Police Chief Fitzpatrick. Sorry clerk, you're not even on this, we'll, we'll get there.
Without the, without the...
We'll get there.
No, 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 we're going to head, this is going to... Come on.
Yeah, but you can use the bulletproof vest every now and again, couldn't you?
Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, councilors.
Ready?
Jim Fitzpatrick, Chief of Police.
Go ahead, I'll give a brief description of what this is about.
The 2015 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant is a grant we get yearly to replace vests that are going out of service. And this would purchase approximately 21 vests.
Yeah, I see what you're seeing there, Police Chief. There is some confusion here. This memo looks like it's, I don't see where it talks about, oh, there it is. Third paragraph is what you're looking for, the waiver?
Mm-hmm. No, I, I think that you can, you can, that was for the last council meeting. You can disregard that.
Okay.
So the, the grant is for approximately, actually, $15,800, which will purchase 21 vests that are going out of service.
So my general question is this, is this enough? Do we still have a need for vests? Is this going to be enough to equip our, our officers?
This will be enough to, you will replace, we, we do it yearly as we, as they come to their expiration date. This will cover the ones that are going out of service.
So this is just general routine maintenance?
Correct.
Restocking, getting rid of the old ones, bringing in the new ones, and it's cyclical, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we'll need to order a public hearing on this as well, or is this one we can just adopt?
No, no public.
If there's no free cash going, got it? Okay.
Correct. Authorization to expend the grant. He's already accepted the grant.
Are there any questions from any of the committee members?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Chief, are there any matching funds? I, I reviewed the documentation, I couldn't find anything.
No, sir. No matching funds with this grant.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief.
No further questions? I believe there is a motion on the floor. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion on the floor to send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion made.
Second.
Second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing done, I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Guys have it. Chief, you're up for the next one?
I think we'll leave the next one. I don't have the agenda of numbers.
2316, this is for the Support and Incentive Grant.
2216.
2216, thank you, for $243,636. Again, Support and Incentive Grant.
That is a grant from Executive Office of Public Safety. Will cover salaries for 911 operators. Approximately six salaries.
Let me go look under my budget. How much are we outside of the grants funding or paying for the call takers?
I believe it's three.
Give me a second to find it. Call takers in our budget, the budget level for 15 was three, the mayor's recommendation was for nine, and we have in the mayor's 2016 budget, $352,619. So is this above and beyond that amount?
Yes, this would be covering, I think this would cover overtime.
All right, so I might need to talk to Mr. Rynello about this. So this is for overtime costs? Not, we're not hiring new call takers?
I don't have the grant agreement, but at the time we put the budget together, that grant didn't come in, so I think we budgeted for those call takers. And now that the grant comes in, I'm not sure the period of this grant, we will shift some of those funds over to the grant, but, but we didn't know it at the time we prepared the grant last, last fall, last April.
This is a fundamental question, I think maybe my, my new colleagues, and I'll learn from this as well. When we put together this budget, and we're going to be putting together a new budget here fairly soon, we put together this budget, we are not anticipating grants. These numbers do not include grants in here. These are monies that we're taking out of, out of either state funds, aid or own taxes to pay for these positions, correct?
If we know of a grant, it's in, in other words, we'll move the grant, the, the, there is a, there is a number in this budget, I can't remember off the top of my head, I don't have it in front of me, but it's 180 to 280,000, which is the police department matching, we, we require to match, and it's generally for police department matching portions of grants. It's not this one. But there are, that's included in the budget. So if we know about grants and there's a matching need, or we know that three call takers would be paid for out of a grant, we wouldn't put them in the budget as well and double fund them. We would just request from the council what we need to get through the fiscal year. But at the time we put this grant, we did have, the prior year, we did have people on a call takers grant, but we didn't get renewal of the grant at the time we submitted the budget. So I believe, I'm not sure what the timeframe in this budget is, Chief, but we do have positions in the budget for call takers and once this grant is approved and, and, or has been approved, we just need to expend it, we can move these salaries onto the grant off the general fund.
We, that last part, I think is important. We can move this money off of the grant.
Onto the grant.
Onto the grant. So we will therefore have essentially a bit of a surplus in this account in our salaries in police operations.
That is correct.
Personal services.
Correct.
We should.
Yes.
Because we can also take within that account, as a reminder for my new colleagues here, we can also take that money and put it toward overtime without having to come before the council because it's in personnel services. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Yes, that's correct.
Are we looking, is that, I'm just curious now, because you opened up the box, is this with the money that we're going to be bringing from this to offset the cost for the call takers? What's the plan of that savings that we have now? The savings of approximately, well, almost a quarter of a million dollars. What are we going to do with that?
We're going to leave it in that account. It'll be free cash next year. We have bi-weekly overtime meetings of the police department to make sure he's not just spending it on...
It's, it's only for the 911 call takers. They couldn't spend it on anything else anyways. I mean, that line item will stay there.
The, it's, I understand a little more completely now. So there's going to be essentially a surplus in this budget at the end of this, end of this fiscal year?
Correct.
Any questions for anybody else?
No.
No questions, all right. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to send it up to the full council and order with a favorable recommendation.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
And also I see on this, you may want to correct this boilerplate for the full council. I think the previous mayor was listed as a sponsor. I don't think that's accurate.
Oh, you're correct. Sorry, sir. Yeah. I apologize.
Still we noted, he's very powerful, but I don't think he extended it to this administration. All right. Motion made, second one, favor say aye.
Aye.
Guys have it. You're up, Chief, next one?
I believe the next one on the agenda is the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative Grant in the amount of $600,000.
Is this the one with Delphi Technology Solutions?
No, sir. That's, that's the 911 grant, the equipment side.
So that's the next one we're doing?
Oh, what do you think? Like 2316?
We're on 2316, is that, I just want to make sure I got the right document.
I think we voted that, I, I voted.
What's that?
I think I presented that one already.
Why is it in our packet? We need to take this out?
No, no.
This should be in here? That should be in here.
Yeah. I don't have that.
2216 is this, this, this.
What is this? 22, that's what we get 16.
I don't have, there's nothing for the, that's a...
$43,000.
That includes all of them.
What I would like to do, councilors, I did not, I just saw this in the packet, is Delphi involved in that last pa, in that last?
No, sir. That should have...
This is in here. Why is this in here? And the only reason why I'm saying this, I potentially, I might be conflicted out of this, and I need to know what this is doing in our packets.
This is, this is not, it's not in my packet. I don't know, I don't know why it's in yours.
It's on the council agenda, January 19th, item 22, 23, here's 2316.
No, he's talking, that's, that's the, that's under the JAG, that's a Justice Assistance Grant, item...
The title of this document is Network Support and Information Technology Services for the Lawrence Police Department.
Yeah, that should not be in there.
Should not be in our packet. Can we make a note of that? Save some paper.
That's, that's associated with a different grant that's already been voted on and approved.
Okay.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. We've dealt with this in the past.
Yes, sir.
Okay, move on then. 600,000?
Yes, sir. That's the, the award for the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative from Executive Office of Health and Human Services to pursue public prevention of youth violence in the city of Lawrence.
And as a reminder, this was the, this was the one that Art McCabe in the plant department was spearheading and now has moved over to your department.
Yeah, we, I mean, again, the vast majority of the monies go to our, our partners in this endeavor, but we are the fiscal agent now.
It's what, I'm sorry?
We are the fiscal agent for the grant.
And this is one of those, again, as a reminder and background for my colleagues, this is one of those that it seems though every three months, there was a new grant coming for this. It, it seems like we're here frequently to approve more monies coming in.
Correct. That's, that's, I don't know, that's just how they release it through the Health and Human Services.
So far this year, this fiscal year, how much money have we received from this grant if we include this in here?
I don't have that in front of me.
I think it's one of those questions that we can anticipate at the full council level, so if you can get that, that would be useful.
For, for this fiscal year?
This fiscal year.
Yeah, it's, it's a revolving grant, so it's difficult, but I can, I can do it for the fiscal year.
Only reason why I'm saying that, Chief, is it, it's the continuity, it's constantly come before us.
I understand. No, it's a good, I respect the question.
That'd be helpful. Do you want to, again, we've got some new members, I'm not sure, I mean, I don't want to take up time unless it's wanted or required, but just a brief summary of what this SSY, there's a lot of monies, it's over half a million dollars, so just a brief summary of what this is about.
The, the purpose of this grant is to identify people that have, well, we, the purpose of it is to support the reintegration of people that have been involved in gang activity. And part of that is trying to get them to do like work programs. Some of them actually involves working with, street workers, what they call, they do some recruitment to bring these, we wouldn't call them, people that have already seen, have been in jail for violent crime and are trying to be reintegrated back into society. So they provide for a, more of a safety net for them to try to get them some job skills, providing some, providing some employment as well.
Any question, is there a motion to start off with? If we can ask questions, any motion?
Motion to approve and send it up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion made.
Second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? Questions, right, Counselor?
If the...
Counselor DePena.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel President.
Thank you. Chief, are there any matching funds for this particular grant?
No, sir.
Okay. How many entities are we collaborating with for this grant right now?
This falls under the, it falls under a, the Lawrence, I can't remember the, hold on a second.
Youth Bill?
I'll say Lawrence Family Development Program. And they have the, the coordinators, it's on the second page. Or maybe it's the fourth page. There's different program directors that provide training. There's people that do recruitment, those are the street workers. Program partners and consultants. There is... There are a number of different entities that are involved in this. The Y MCA, the Intense Boxing Gym, Essex Arts Center, and the Family Services of Mary Mac Valley, provide myriad of program supports.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Chief, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, so there's, any further discussion? Here we now call the question, all in favor say aye. Aye. Most no, the ayes have it.
If it would be helpful, I can have the program director present at the full council?
You know what would be helpful, is if you, if the program director was here in anticipation of potential questions. That would be helpful. We don't necessarily need a full, if a councillor has a question, that resource would be, would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Yes, we do, right, one more? Public Safety Staffing Grant for over a million dollars?
This is the grant that's provided from Executive Office of Public Safety for the hiring and staffing of police officers. I don't think it was in your packet, but I have a breakdown of the, of the budget, if you want to get a copy of that.
Sure, it's, I'm not, I'm not sure what you have, but if you provide that, we can see we have it in our packet.
In a nutshell, we'll be, we're going to, we're looking at hiring five net new police officers under this grant.
So, under Police Ops, I believe, right? Under Police Ops, we have, well, right now, our, our total budget, and this is always where it gets a little risk, this kind of gets convoluted, but we have budgeted 136 individuals in our Police Ops. Some of them are call takers, nine of them are call takers, as a plant manager, so not all police patrols officers, but I guess the big number here is 94 patrol officers. So now, with this grant...
There's 129 sworn police officers.
That includes superiors, correct?
Superior officers, correct.
All right, I can do some quick math. There's 94 patrols in our budget, eight lieutenants, that's 102. A cap, there's four captains, that's 106.
Sergeants.
Sergeant, 18, that's 124. What'd you say her number was?
129. They might not be, there may be school resource officers that aren't reflected on that budget. There is 129 sworn, though.
So, I just did a, just in my head, so we, I counted 124 in our budget. Before this five, we're currently at 129, you're saying that with this grant, we're at 134?
Correct.
Sworn police officers, now, I just want to make sure, you threw in the school safety people, so is that, is the 129 that you mentioned, I repeat again, does that include that, or not include that number?
Well, I'm looking, I'm considering as the sworn, full strength.
What I want to tell the people in my district is, listen, we have built up our police department. We were X number of years ago at 121. Now we're at 134. And I'm, I want to compare apples to apples, I don't want to throw in...
Yeah, I mean, there, there's sworn officers that can, are just the same as, I mean, it's just a budgetary, where, where they're pa, they're paid from.
Okay, councillor, we were at, in the prior year's budget, we're at 119 sworn officers, again, on the police force, not necessarily in the general fund budget. And then we're up to 129 now, again, not necessarily in the general fund budget, because there are three, they're on the school budget, so they're not reflect, we wouldn't budget for them twice. And, and so this grant is going to add another five to that number. So it will now be 134 sworn officers.
All right, so just, here's my bumper sticker, you ready? In 2015, we had, give me the number, how many sworn officers?
One, one nineteen, in an FY15 budget.
And in FY16 now, the big number, the big reveal is what, was our number?
It's 129.
So we went up 10, did that include the five they're about to get here?
No.
So we're up at 134.
We're adding five more.
With this, right, 134, so the, the big reveal is, we've added 15 officers in one year.
In, in, in two years, really. Because FY15 and FY16.
That's still a big number, anyway you slice it.
It's, it's a big commitment that the city's made, this administration's had made a large commitment to the police department, and we've been monitoring the numbers as well, because this is a big commitment to the city, and we just want to make sure it's the right move, so we're comfortable.
And I just wanted my colleagues to know, we get a lot of, I mean, we're the city of Lawrence, we get a lot of grants, right? We get a lot of these grants, but I don't recall seeing a grant, excuse me, in my recent memory, where you got a direct letter from the governor himself, and lieutenant governor, with the award on here. So that tells you that this board, this, this million dollars is, is important not only to them, it's important to us, and they wanted to highlight that. So in our packet, you'll see actual letter from Governor Baker, Lieutenant Governor Polito, detailing the one, a little over one million dollars that is being brought into the city for this purpose, to bring our numbers up to what we just now said is 134 sworn police officers.
Yeah, a little background on that, there's, there's the grand amount, there's 10 communities that, that vie for about 4.5 million dollars, and we get, we've got a million, so you can, quick math will tell you that.
And then again, how many communities are vying for this?
There's 10 communities vying for the money.
For how much?
4.5 million.
Out of 10, we got a quarter of it?
We got, yes, correct.
Wow.
And I think, I think a lot of that goes to the, the commitment, as, as Mark said, the commitment of the mayor, and as well as the city council, to increasing their staffing in their police department. I think that's why we do get that, that amount of money, because we use it for its intended purpose, which is to increase your staffing.
Hey, my last question, and I, my colleagues might have questions on this. Are there any strings attached? Is it one of those things that we continue on for a number of years, and we got to pu, we got to pay after a year, or two, or three?
No, no, it's just, it's a one-year grant, it runs, it runs from November 1st of 2015 to November 1st of 2016. It's, it's good, because it gives the opportunity for the city to bridge some expenses as to recruitment. You can pay for uniforms, radios, all kinds of, all the equipment while they're in the academy. So it gives the city the opportunity to, to wean them onto the general fund. And again, it's a big commitment, obviously, going forward.
That just goes to show you how much it costs for a police officer, you've got five police officers, a million dollars. That's a lot of money per police officer, to get that person going through school, equipment, uniforms, everything, insurance, the whole, that's a, it's a heck of a investment, a needed investment.
That's a six-month, it's a six-month, you only had a return on your investment for six, at least six months, could be as many as nine with the field training.
Are people in the academy right now? I know I lied about that question.
No, we don't, we're trying to, we're trying to earmark these folks for the May, May of this year.
I'll stop there. Any other questions?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President?
Thank you. So, once again, the timeline on this is November 1st, 2015, to November 1st, 2016.
Yeah, so it carries through the fiscal year, so it's helpful in that regard as well. So that it's, if you go through some of the breakdown and the numbers, there's, there's percentages of what they'll pay of their salary, once they're out of the academy into the next fiscal year.
Okay, so with that said, is the city, I know we're in budget preparations, possibly for fiscal year 2017, if not starting very soon, it might be more directed, possibly to Director Arnello, through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Arnello, do we anticipate budgeting for the last three quarters to maintain this additional five police officers?
Yeah, we will, the, because the grant will run through November, we'll pick up their salaries from, from November 1st of 16 through June 30, so we'll pick up the remaining portion of their salary in the FY17 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Arnello.
Do we need their committee members to have questions? If not... Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Abdu.
Chief, you need a 30-day waiver on this? Are you requesting one?
Yes, I was, if that's possible.
We can make that part of the motion, if you like, Mr. Abdu.
All right, I'd make a motion to move to the full council with a favorable recommendation to include a waiver of 30-day period.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by the council president, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Is that it?
I think so, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief, thank you for all you're doing on behalf of the city, we appreciate it.
You're welcome, and I appreciate all, all of your support, support.
And when you go back, those, the officer that you had the other night, by the way, at the Wyndham Hotel, that was phenomenal, Officer Vargas, that's fantastic, you got an officer of the year award and a lot of...
Yes, and very, very hard worker.
Proud of him, and thanks for working for our city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Vargas, you're up.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry?
I suggest that we add the document to the, to be part of the packet.
Okay, let's, let's include that. You got it?
Wonderful.
So done. Document 2516, this is a, I believe, Mr., Mr. Vargas gave us background on this? Yes, right. So, welcome.
Thanks, councilors. So this, this is a part of a well-documented event that we had here in our city, the filming of Live By Night, starring Ben Affleck, Sienna Miller, and Zoe Saldana. As part of the negotiations of getting him here in the city, they committed to making some contributions to the city. Most of that coming in the, coming in the form of payment to DPW, police, fire, and other city departments. But on top of that, they also committed to making a donation to the city that we negotiated, to make sure that we had a little bit more compensation than just the, the coverage of staff, to support some of the activities that we're doing here in the city. I've also, so that, that number that we negotiated came in at $30,000, which is what the...
I want to interrupt you right there, Mr. Vargas, I apologize. I just want to make sure, you gave, I know I have it, and Mr. Abdu has, I want to make sure we all have a copy of that, of letter that you gave, that you, were you able to give a copy over to the council president?
I, I, I think I did, if not, I have additional copies here. So the, the original...
Could you provide an extra one for?
Sure.
I, I did give it to...
I think I have it.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not in the stack, it's, it was given to us right before the meeting started.
Put that one right in top, yeah.
You have, you have the copy there? That's part of it, yeah.
Yeah.
You have the background on it?
I don't have it though.
And that, yeah, this, councillor DePena?
You got it, I'm good. We want to make sure we're reading all of it on the same page.
I apologize.
No worries, thank, thank you. So, so again, we did receive a $30,000 contribution from them, above and beyond all the other things that they, that they paid for. In total, the city did receive roughly around $170,000. If you were to add all those numbers, DPW, police, fire, site rentals, and the donation, it's about $170,000. In addition to that, I want to make sure that I highlight the fact that they made contributions to some of the small businesses, and some of the other operators in and around the area. They did not want us to disclose the amounts that they gave to these small businesses, but you'll see local assistance, you'll see the, the specifics on, on the companies or the businesses that were provided compensation for the disruption of business. So in total, what they gave the city, what they gave businesses, parking that they leased out, and so on and so forth, the amount that they gave to, to, to city entities was about $330,000.
Say that again?
So, what they gave the city for different types of services, plus a donation, plus what they gave local businesses, the total number is about $336,000, $336,000 that the, that the city was able to yield through the, through having the movie from the city, which is great, right? So, it's not just about the city getting a little bit of money, but also the businesses. If they had disruption of, of operations, the movie production team provided them with compensation to make up for the difference of what they lost. So you sold X, and you sold X minus five, the production company gave them the five.
Explain to me, you may have, and it, you, I got lost in some of the detail.
Sure.
When I was reading the local reports, that we were receiving $100,000, and now I'm seeing $30,000. If you said, I'm sorry, can you just remind me again why there's a discrepancy?
So the $100,000 that are, that are listed was in everything? So all the DPW, police, so on and so forth, that we had initially calculated. When the numbers came back, it turned out they needed a lot more police officers, they needed more fire detail, and they needed more DPW detail. So that number went from $100,000 to $170,000. And most, most of the increase did come from additional police detail. So the, the $100,000 that was, that was well documented in the paper was not a donation, it was covering everything. Police, again, like I mentioned.
All right, so I just want to make sure we're clear, there, there, so a lot of the money that we're receiving is actually bills that they're paying.
Right.
Services rendered, mostly overtime, details.
Right.
For police, DPW said. Now, what part of that was things above and beyond? That the $30,000, they just gave a check to the city? Above that, a, a check.
Right.
Our general fund, here's $30,000, thank you for being such good sports in our city.
Exactly.
All right, so that, so that's really important, because there's a, I mean, you can't begin to tell you the number of times I heard, we just got $100,000, but you can't do X, Y, and Z, you know, and everybody's, you should put money, $100,000 toward that. Well, we didn't get $100,000.
Right.
We got $30,000. And so now, when I get that question, the $30,000, what are we spending it on? How do, how would you recommend that I respond to that?
So the, what I have recommended, and of course, it needs to be, I'm making a recommendation, has to be confirmed by the council. The mayor, a few years ago, two years ago, had this, this, this initiative, Clean Lawrence. So we want to be able to support some of that, some of that activity, Clean Lawrence, where he hired 25 people, was confirmed by the council, to kind of clean the streets, right? So it's a part of some of that activity, as, as you drive through some of our local business districts, Lawrence Street, South Union, Broadway, Jackson, some of those streets don't have trash receptacles. So I think it's important that, though we have a, a large amount of trash receptacles on, on Essex Street and on Common Street, that we should spread some of the love out to the neighborhood business districts. So that's what I'm hoping to be able to achieve with these funds. Additionally, the city doesn't have any money for marketing, so we want to take this opportunity to carve out some of that $30,000 and take on some marketing, marketing activity that otherwise we would not be able to take on. So that represents the $5,500 that's on the, that's on the item.
So $5,500 for marketing for the city, and the balance for Clean Lawrence?
Correct.
So 2,405?
2,405.
Clean Lawrence. I'm just curious, I have time to ask you, what was the reception of the business owners during this time? Is this something that we would embrace again? Or was this too much of a bother for the money that we brought in, and that they were able to bring in? What was your, what was your, the administration's reaction to that?
The, just like anything, you do something that, that disrupts things, people aren't happy. But I think it was an opportunity for, for the administration and local businesses to work together. There was a sense of, you know, what's going on, I'm losing money. But we were able to sit down with them and negotiate terms that they were comfortable with, and at the end of the day, they were comfortable with the terms. So we, we went business by business, knocked on every door. You, we're going to close the street down, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Can you provide us a list of, or a report of how much mon, how much, how much you do in sales on a regular Thursday, and how much you did in sales on that Thursday, and we closed down the streets, and we compared the two? And if you sold five bucks this day, and you sold three bucks the next day, the two bucks that you lost, that you were able to document and show us, the production company made that payment. So I think once we started having those conversations with the small business owners, they got a lot more comfortable with the activity. Some business owners actually did better with, with the, with the, the production being here, but for the most part, most businesses lost. So we wanted to make sure that they, they didn't experience a loss, and we did what we had to do. And as you see by the list here, where, wherever you say, see local support, those are all individual business owners that we actually went, negotiated, came to terms with, and provided them with compensation for whatever money that was being lost.
And if we're doing an analysis of this, this is just one part, this is one slice of the apple. I would imagine the second slice of the apple would be, there's ancillary benefits, such as, there are, the production crew went to eat somewhere, right?
Yeah, and that's, that's not captured here.
That's not captured in this, right?
No.
So there's, and other people came in to see what was going on from around the area, and they had to shop somewhere and maybe buy something at Tripoli's, or someplace else, or get some lunch, or get some gas, or whatever. So it was more money coming in, I'm presuming, right?
Absolutely.
And then a net positive, as opposed to people shying away and not coming in, because, oh, I don't want to come in? Place is a disaster for driving.
Right, I, I, I think that's true, and there's no way for us to really get a sense of what that number looks like. And I, I wouldn't venture to take a guess, just because it's so difficult to pinpoint. But my assumption is that, yes, that there was additional revenues that these businesses were able to take advantage of, because of the activity.
All right, any other discussions, questions? Or a motion?
Motion to approve and send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion made? Second, seconded by Mr. DePena, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas, we will see you in a couple weeks. Clerk, save the best for last, clerk.
Of course. Document number three of 2016. I've never been so happy to report that I owe $60 from FY215.
How did this happen, clerk?
I, I don't know. I started to pay the bill, and I'm looking up, and I see May 27, 2015, and I say, oh, my God. And the vendor certainly pointed out to me. What I did was, I looked at the bottom line, and of course, looking at the bottom line doesn't show the full figure, and it's minus $60, and I paid it $60 short when I did pay it. That's what happened.
This is a private, your previous year's bill?
Yes, that's, and I'm asking permission to pay that $60.
I am going to let you know right now that the former council president really looks for these things, so be prepared to answer questions at the full council level on previous years.
Well, you know, the fact of the matter is that this is on the cusp of a fiscal year. I try to hustle to get it paid. I did get it paid minus the 60. That's what happened.
All right, any questions for the clerk?
Motion to approve and send it up to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Motion's been made.
Seconded.
Seconded. No further discussions? I'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Thank you, Councilors.
Mr. Aronello, is there anything else?
Yeah, I have two grants on the agenda, 11 and 12. They were mistaken from the last.
Oh, yeah.
Agenda, so...
Thank you. Is that document 716?
It's Bill and the other two. Yeah, 1116 and 1216, two small grants.
So, this is the Municipal Energy Technical Assistance Grant for $12,500.
Yes.
Give me a second to find it, please. While we're waiting, the other documents, we probably don't need to have in here, right? Document 716, document 816, we already took care of those two.
Yeah, they shouldn't have been on the agenda.
Yeah, there needs to be a little bit of cleanup. There's a bit of a rush to get these things out the door. So, we can just make sure those are eliminated from the agenda, they're at the full council level. And 316's been taken care of. Now, we're at 1116. I'm ready. Is everybody else ready?
All ready.
716?
No, this is a document number 1116.
1116.
It looks like this.
Has a cover letter from me indicating $12,500, and the subject matter, D O E R, Grant Authorization to Expend Grant Funds.
It's deep, deep, deep in there.
1116.
To the bottom.
It's halfway in the packet. What number are you on right now?
Oh, it's quite a ways in the packet.
That's it, 1116.
That's it? That's what we're looking at, 1116?
Yeah, 1116.
That's what we're looking at now? So, I think we're good. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Aronello. You've got enough people here.
So, this grant is $12,500. We have a, we piggyback on the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. They put out just to, for request for proposal, energy consultants to help us with getting involved in energy products. So, this $12,500 is a grant from the state to pay for $12,500 worth of services related to energy, energy improvement projects. Specifically, this is an energy savings performance contract, and we, we had, we did one a few years ago to put some new lighting in City Hall and a few, the gizmos on the radiators that you can dial. And this would be something a little more comprehensive to review, and it might be something that could take through an energy audit, would be completed. We need a consultant to kind of help us decipher what those energy audits would, would show and support. And perhaps we might enter into a, an agreement to refurbish some of our buildings and use the energy savings to pay for the debt service. That's, in essence, what this is about. It's very complicated, and we need the energy service consultant to guide the city through this process. It's very extensive and technical. So, that's what the grant is for. It's, runs through June 30, 2016, and we have Peregrine Energy as the energy consultants, which the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission put out to bid, and that's who's helping us on this endeavor.
So, my question to you is, once we get, we, the grants accepted, they come in and start doing an energy audit of our buildings, and I'm presuming it's not, draw the buildings, not just one building?
Yeah, all the city buildings, yeah.
All city buildings. So, can we expect to see some sort of cost savings after the end of this, with some recommendations that we'll be able to see in the upcoming budget?
Yeah, it'd be a major proposal. It would be, you know, depending on the energy audit, it could be several million dollars' worth of improvements to city buildings to be paid for, the debt service be paid for out of the energy savings. That's the intent of the program, and many communities have taken advantage of it. One that this particular Lowell, I guess, did something very similar a few years ago. I think they did about $20 million's worth of improvements to some of their buildings. And it's quite, it can be quite extensive, particularly with our, our buildings, our old. There's a lot of energy savings to be had, and the more energy savings may indicate, may allow us to do a little bit more, work, allow us to rehab more of the buildings than we'd like, which is a good thing.
So, are you looking to get this thing done prior to the, prior to the capital improvement plan being excited?
This would be, this might be subsequent to the capital improvement plan.
You see where I'm going with this?
Because this isn't going to be done yet.
You can see what's going to happen here.
This would be the study.
There could be some major capital improvement projects that may be the off, the result of this.
There could be additional ones because of this. We'll have, we've identified, done the process of identifying a bunch of improvements now. Some of these improvements on that list could be, once this energy audit is conducted, we might be able to remove. We're not going to be able to take care of all the energy, all the improvements on the departmental lists. We have needs that have been identified far in excess of what we can afford, and this might be a way to get some of them done. If they have some energy-related savings associated with them, we can move them on to this program.
Any questions by any councilors, committee members?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President?
Mr. Aronello, are there any matching funds for this particular grant?
No, this is a, state will give us up to $12,500 to reimburse the, reimburse us for the cost of the consultant. If we spend above and beyond that, that's what we'll, we'll have to come out of our, we'll have to identify resources for that. Right now, this is to guide us through the, the energy audit savings portion, so that's not taking us through, that's not an agreement to help us with construction and all that stuff. This is just to analyze the cost savings and whether the project is worthwhile for the city.
Have we analyzed approximately how much it will cost to do the audit itself?
The, the audit would be done by the, the vendor who's interested in, in doing a, in helping us do this. They would do the construction work, and they would perform an energy audit. The energy audit would be funded through a bond, a bond issuance, basically. We would issue bonds, and the savings, the payment of those bonds would be tied to the energy savings on the improvements to those buildings.
If we were to go over the, through you, Mr. Chair, if we were to go over the $12,500 to be reimbursed by the state, do we have, have we budgeted for any additional expenditures?
Well, the, the expectation to review the energy piece of this and the analysis of whether it's worthwhile for the city, that's the estimate of $12,500. So, that should take us just to, through that. If we proceed with the investment and proceed with the program, which could be, like I said, several million dollars of construction, there may be some additional as part of that bond package. We might want to, as part of that bond package, have some oversight or some, you know, obviously, some architects and construction oversight, but we would put that as part of the bond package.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I do understand that, that portion, but I'm specifically speaking about the energy audit. So, if the energy audit were to be over $12,500, let's say $13,000.
The energy audit will be, the company will, will, it'll probably cost them, they, they expect to spend well over $100,000 on the energy audit. That's the, that's the company coming...